Okay, we're ready to call to order the Rochester City Council meeting of June 22nd, 2020. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Here.
Bavacqua?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Heathley?
Here.
Peterson? Here, but muted. Sage?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
All right. Next, we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First, we're on to public comment. Leanne, is there any public comment? Anybody here?
Um, nothing. Blaine sent me an email late this afternoon. Let me take a look real quick.
Is that the one on the trees?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll talk, we can talk about that when we get to that agenda item.
Yep.
Okay. Without public com- without public comment, I will move on to approval of the minutes, the minutes of the regular meeting of June 8th, 2020.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Peterson. Welcome, Councilmember Peterson.
I was on. I just didn't have the video on.
Yeah, okay. I thought you were. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda. First is the Oakland County Cares Act reimbursement agreement. Item B is request to approve an upgrade of the security of a video camera for City Hall, the police station, and the parking decks. Next is a consideration of a special event application from CCC Corporation to hold the CCC 5K to benefit Cardinal Hospice on September 19th in the municipal park. D is a consideration of a special event application for the Rochester PSD to hold movie in the moonlight on Saturday, June 11th through August 1st in the farmer's market parking lot. Item E is a consideration of a special event application for the Rochester PSD to hold sidewalk sales on August 6th through 8th. F is a consideration of a special event application for the Rochester DDA to hold the downtown Rochester Thursday Market on Thursdays from June 9th to August 27th. This event will be held in the upper level of the east parking platform, which is something new. Next is consideration of a special event application from Rochester PSD to hold the Junk in the Trunk Event on Saturday, August 1st. This event will be held in the farmer's market parking lot. H is a consideration of a special event application for the Studio Rochester to hold their dance recital in the band shell on Sunday, June 12th, starting at 11:00 a.m. And last, but not least, except for review for the current 2020 event calendar.
Mayor on A.
Councilmember Sage.
But was City Manager Wing?
I was just trying to make a point of clarification on H. It's actually July 12th, not June 12th.
Okay. Thank you. I had July 12th. Thank you. Councilmember Sage.
Yes, sir. I'd like to remove item A and item D for further discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Albrecht.
I'd also like to remove item H for further discussion.
Okay.
And could we actually, Mayor, remove B as well?
All right. All right, maybe we shouldn't have put these on the consent agenda. I don't know. Okay, so we have C, E, F, G, and I.
I can make a motion to approve CGF and I.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Salvia.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Peterson. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Very good. So we'll start at the Oakland County Cares Act reimbursement agreement. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want clarification on what expenses specifically we would be applying for that pertain to COVID-19. And possibly that's an update that's coming later in the finance report. But I think we do need to clarify that.
Mr. City Manager?
Yep, I can start, and then Anthony can chime in. There actually is a worksheet that Anthony will be presenting later on this evening. But primarily, the biggest cost that is a qualified cost is our premium pay, which is the hazard pay, which is the largest expense. And then there's some other expenses that probably total around $70,000 in addition to the salary component. I will note that the agreement with Oakland County does go to the end of November, so we most likely will have one or two additional submittals with our application. But this is the next step in the process is to approve the agreement between the county and the city in regards to the Cares Act.
Councilmember Sage?
Nope, that clarifies it unless any other council members have questions.
Councilmember Salvia?
Yes, I just want to clarify. Section 3.2 and 3.4 talk about coordination with FEMA. And I know this was brought up, I think, by Oakland County, Adam Kokendorfer, at his presentation. So are we coordinating with FEMA as well?
Yes, we've already applied for and received some FEMA dollars. And then there's other FEMA applications that we, that require 75%. Then we can actually get the other matching 25% using the Cares dollars. So there's coordination when we're doing these costs. Remember, we have to coordinate so we don't double dip. Correct, yeah, that was gonna be then. So the max we could get is the 75 plus the 25 would be 100, so that we could never double dip. So also, there's certain things that are eligible underneath the FEMA ones that might not be for cares and vice versa. There might be some that are for cares that are eligible through FEMA. And so, yeah, and FEMA, as the chief is telling me, FEMA does go through the end of the year through December 31st versus this one is the end of November.
Okay.
Good. Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, so how much have we received so far then from FEMA?
$9,500.
Okay.
$9,555 from the Department of Health and Human Services. We have not received any FEMA funding at this point. But that was money through FEMA, but then distributed through Health and Human Services.
Anthony, I think you need to speak up next time.
It's about $9,500. I don't know if everybody heard what Anthony was stating. Okay.
Okay.
No, thank, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I got rid of the microphone if this is better.
That's a lot better. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, the $9,555 is money through Department of Health and Human Services. They had money that was flow-through from FEMA, but our application to FEMA directly, we have not received any direct funds yet and nor have we submitted for it yet.
Okay, thank you. Right, motion to approve the Cares Act reimbursement agreement.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is item B, request to approve an upgrade of security of video camera for City Hall, police station, and parking decks.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My question is to the whoever has the answer, chief or administration. How long is this technology going to be good for before we will have to replace it again? Did that come with a guarantee with the company?
Yeah, well, you know, most computer-based products these days, you know, talk about a five-year replacement period. So I don't think there's a guarantee, but we made five years on the deck cameras. We made, obviously, much longer than that on older technology with the station system. But I think anytime you can, currently with present-day technology, anytime you can get beyond five years, you've done pretty well.
Okay, all right, very good. Then I'll make a motion to approve if no one else has any questions.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is item D, is consideration of a special event application for the Rochester PSD to hold movie in the moonlight on Saturday, June 11th through August 1st in the farmer's market parking lot. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think it's July 11th. Is, Christie, is that the first scheduled event on that series?
Yes.
So my only question is, the PSD estimates 500 people attending that event. And I was curious, what was the planning, like, for farmer's market? How many people you expected at that event in the same location? And does this conform with the state guidelines? Since we're still under state of emergency through July 16th, does July 11 pose any issues for anticipating 500 people in that location?
Sure. Great question. So we went ahead. Every event application that we submitted to Chief Shattenhelm had the caveat that these are subject to phase, us moving into phase five, because the guidelines that we're in are phase five, which is the 500. For the farmer's market, it's considered essential service, not a special event. So we worked with the fire chief to come up with our capacity at any one time, which is 200. And that's based on international fire code. That's with vendors and customers. So that's when we've been down there and monitoring the gate each Saturday to make sure we don't have any more than 200 at a time. If we are able to move to phase five, then we would go ahead and do a similar product with the movies where we close down all entrances but one, count five people, 500 people in, and then we're done. If we do not move into phase five, then we have a backup plan that we're looking at right now that we could actually do a drive-in model, which would conform because people would be inside their cars. We do have that technology available to us through our existing provider. So fingers crossed that we can do our 500, but we do have a backup plan just in case.
Okay, so do we need the motion to reflect that?
I know it's in the application, but whatever you need. But it was in all our applications. It's a subject.
Mayor Protem Bavacqua?
I was just gonna ask if we could have the motion reflect that it would only be approved if we went into phase five.
Christie?
I was just gonna say, with the caveat, we could, a drive-in would conform. So I just want to make sure we don't have to come back because that would put us the week of the event, and that would put us a little behind the eight ball. So forever that needs to read in the motion.
Okay, so Councilmember Sage, did you have a motion?
Motion, or to amend the motion based on phase five requirements, that if we don't meet that criteria at that timing for July 11th, we could use the drive-in event to satisfy that event going forward.
Mayor, could the, could the chief make a comment?
I'm sorry.
This is Blaine. Can the chief make a comment?
Yeah, Chief Shattenhelm.
Thank you. Yes, on all the applications that you see today, there is a note there that the events would be approved pending the event qualifying under whatever the current rules are at the time, reference to the executive orders. I was on a call again today with the governor, and this has come up a number of times, that she anticipates making a change prior to July 4th, which will signal what that is. I guess my only concern is, is, you know, we, to label it, stage five might, might not be the proper way to do this, as much as just to note that the current executive order, whatever is in place, would have to be followed. Because it, frankly, you know, she could set a number, as she has in the past, that's over above that number based on what decision is made at the time.
Okay, so Mr. Sage, is that, Councilmember Sage, is that okay?
That's agreeable, yes, sir.
And then Mayor Protem Bavacqua, you second it?
That, that sounds great. I second you.
Okay, and then, and then, this one is the only one that has a Plan B, correct? Or do the others as well? Christie?
No, so for, for instance, for the Thursday night market, we don't anticipate getting that many people in there at one time. We're gonna treat that more like the existing market where we're doing the 200, even though I think our number might creep up a little bit because that lot is 5,000 square feet larger than the other lots. So that one would be fine regardless of what phase we're in. It'd just be a matter of how many people we can put up there. Same thing, junk in the trunk, we don't get that many people at one time. So that would be no issue. And then sidewalks, its own little animal. We, you may notice that Dancing in the Street was not included. That is not a part of sidewalk. We're gonna be taking that out this year because that was probably the one that we couldn't figure out how to effectively do that safely. So we're gonna, and that was a big driver to traffic. So we want to take that away, unfortunately, because we don't want to drive those numbers that we aren't ready for.
Very good. Any further comments? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. And next is item H, consideration of a special event application for the Studio Rochester to hold the dance recital in the band shell on Sunday, July 12th, starting at 11:00 a.m.
I brought this one up, Mayor Bixson. My question, my question is similar to Councilmember Sage's. When I was reading the report, and I've been on the board of Ra-Ra, we did our recital a few weeks, few Saturdays ago, in the parking lot and rotated people through to keep the crowd size, you know, safe and distant. When I was reading the report, and this is probably for Chief Shattenhelm, it said a 2,000-person rotating crowd, 75 to 100 at a time. And I saw your notes, Chief Shattenhelm, that, you know, must adhere to COVID-19 requirements. It seems like a lot of people, and I don't know if the spread out in time and distance is gonna allow us to, to keep people safe. I just wanted you to comment on that.
Chief Shattenhelm?
Yes, so when I asked that question, that's why it says no more than 100. So regardless of whether the rules changed or made the actual number larger, today, an event that could be held with 100 people socially distancing in the outdoors. So they've assured me that over the course of the day, for each event, similar in a way to what Ra-Ra was doing, they would never have more than 100 there at, watching the event at one time.
Okay, I just wanted that clarification, because it's all in the band shell. With Ra-Ra, we were spread out through the whole parking lot and the band. I know outside is fine, but I don't know how many people are gonna be on stage at one time, and that was concerning to me for safety.
Well, and that's the goal, to try to keep those numbers down below 100, would be, make the actual dance groups smaller as well, so that it would only be likewise parents and those interested in the smaller groups, to keep it down under 100.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve item H, consideration.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Salvia. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Very good. Next is, we do not have any old business. We do not have a public hearing today. Onto legislative deliberation. First is a resolution regarding the tree ordinance amendment. Councilmember Albrecht, would you like to start?
Of course I would.
All right.
As I've mentioned in prior meetings, this group, made up of five members, was initially tasked, tasked by Mayor Bixson to address really the landmark trees and the spirit and congealality of the group and collaboration of the group. We wanted to do more than just that. And as I mentioned in the last council meeting, we went line by line, word by word, under the direction of City Attorney Crot and our resident forester, Mr. Banda. And what you have in front of you is our two documents. One is an excellent summary by City Attorney Crot to really, so to speak, an executive summary of what we're proposing. And then secondly, really, the actual line-by-line ordinance redlined. Before we get into that, I, I woke up this morning to some emails from some of the local HOAs that had addressed some concerns about this. I had a conversation with both Mr. Banda and Blaine Wing, City Manager Wing, during the day today. And I wanted to address a couple things as we get into this. One, we specifically did talk about the HOAs, and there was a letter that was sent in, which I know City Clerk O'Connor has shared with all of us. And in that letter, you know, one of the concerns was that HOAs were not represented. And, and the committee was made up of myself. I am in Stony Creek Ridge North, and I am on my HOA here. Nancy is in Stony Point, also one of the larger, a larger development than mine. And then we had two residents from the city, including somebody who worked with builders. So we wanted to address homeowner rights and so forth. And then last but not least, Mayor Protem Bavacqua. So I thought we had a very good group, and we specifically talked about the HOAs. And I, I don't want to get in too much into the weeds, but we understand that the HOAs are different than homeowners. HOAs, as Nick explained to us, are, I'll use simple numbers because I'm a simple math guy. A development goes in, and they're gonna put in 100 trees. They have a plan that the developer presents to the city. Nick looks at it, and they put 100 trees and et cetera, et cetera. Over the years, trees die, trees grow and crowd on each other. So they come back to Nick and say, hey, we gotta take out 10 trees and replace them with 10 trees. Well, the trees have grown over those years, so they're not gonna replace an 80-foot dying blue spruce with enough trees to make up an 80-foot dying blue spruce. So they will put in another tree there, again, approved against the original plan by that Nick Banda looks at. And that's how HOAs would, would handle their common areas, not much different than homeowners. We focused on our tree canopy. That was our goal. What could we do as a group to ensure that our tree canopy gets better, more dense? We measure it. We report back to the city and to the citizens. So we put in some permits that were not there before, permit fees. And this is not meant to be a money grab in any way, shape, manner, or form. Quite frankly, it's meant to generate revenue that goes specifically into the tree fund so that we can then plant more trees. If we're at X percent tree canopy this year, we want to be X plus Y next year, and X plus YY the following year, so that the tree canopy today is, is, excuse me, the tree canopy 20 years from now is much denser and grown than where it is today. So as I said in seven meetings ago, that our children and our children's children see that we are a true tree city, that our canopy has grown and expanded. So I wanted to just make sure that, as you go through this, and I know possibly City Attorney Crot may take a few of these things, we, we wanted to focus on making sure that, you know, if you're, you're still gonna be able to remove your trees, we're not gonna charge you a permit per tree, or HOAs are not gonna have to do a permit for 20 trees that they, that they replace. If you have a plan, there's a permit that goes in, you work the plan, and you move on. You know, we are, spent a lot of work again, work on this. And I think a lot of the language in here was based on the experience of Mr. Banda, who actually does this, who is a forester. And we wanted to make sure we balance both homeowner rights and really having, you know, trees, you know, making sure that we are a tree city, that we continue to grow, that we continue, you know, we're going into our seventh year as a tree city, and I want 20 years from now that it'll be our 27th year, like Rochester Hills is. We may not have the resources they have, but using the tree fund to plant trees in common areas, in our parks and other areas, and improve that canopy was really the goal and focus of this committee. And I would ask your support tonight. I'm not gonna make the motion. I just wanted to really present this, that we did look at everything. We tried to balance our views, you know, versus homeowners, versus tree, tree lovers, so to speak. And I think we put together a very solid ordinance with recommendations. Thank you, Mayor Bixson.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Mr. City Manager, I believe we have a comment from a citizen. So the person with the phone number 656 at the end, if we could unmute him, him or her. Welcome. Could you identify yourself for, for the record, please?
Yes, my name's Richard Kenjuk, and I'm a vice president on Stony Creek Ridge Homeowners Association, and I'm responsible for landscape and infrastructure. I was the person that drafted.
I was just gonna say, you're the one who sent the letter, so for everybody to know. So, welcome, and feel free to give your comments.
Thank you. Well, first, let me say upfront, our major concern here is not with the fees and not with the canopy. Our concern is how this may impose some burdens on us and, and commit us to doing things that may not be practical for our particular homeowners' association. For those of you that may not be familiar with us, we're basically bounded by Parkdale and Runyon, and we are Dequinder to roughly Stony Point Boulevard. Now, in our subdivision, we have 425 trees along Parkdale, Runyon, Dequinder, and in about 18 islands and also around our common areas. That does not include maybe as many as 2,000 trees elsewhere within our commons. About three years ago, we identified some pretty serious problems where as many as one quarter of the trees that we had in the first area that I described were diseased. And we put into motion a $170,000 four-year plan to address that situation. We hired a certified arborist to come in, diagnose the problem, and basically develop a plan. Since that time, we've re-landscaped our Roundview entrance. Right now, we're in the process of re-landscaping the Chase entrance, and also Traffic Island at the corner of Spring View and Wing Gate. We've also implemented plans to trim trees and do things that we haven't done in the past. We are treating the trees up to eight times a year. We're doing deep root fertilizing. And I have to say that we're three years into a four-year program. Our trees are looking much better than they did a while ago. But some of our specific concerns is that, you may not know, that for us to cut down a mature tree and replace it is about $1,000. That's to cut it down, grind the trunk, and then replace it with an eight-foot to 10-foot spruce tree, or a three to three-and-a-half-inch caliper deciduous tree. Some of our concerns, as it was mentioned, if I understand it correctly, okay, if we have 10 trees at our entrance, and we have to cut all 10 down before, because they've grown into each other, well, why would we be forced to plant 10 trees in that same area, only to encounter the same problem 20 years from now? And then, you know, in a conversation with, with Mr. Banda earlier today, he mentioned the fact that we could plant trees elsewhere. Well, that may not be as practical as well, because even though we have about 250 on the 250 acres, most of that is not irrigated. two hundred and fifty on the two hundred and fifty acres, most of that is not irrigated. So if we were to plant a tree, how are we going to help it to take root? So there are some issues that we have that we don't think are practical. Another major concern that we have is that down the road, if we encounter another problem like Emerald Ash Bore, we haven't had time to digest this ordinance thoroughly, but we are concerned that it may commit us to replacing every tree that dies. And if that were to happen, that would place a huge financial burden. So until we get an opportunity to maybe talk this over and maybe present some of our, our concerns in detail, we simply are asking that basically we pump the brakes on this a little bit and you know, try to take some time to truly understand what's going on. Now, there's some other things that are outlined in the memo that I sent, but the ones that I discussed are our major concerns.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Council, further comments? Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So after upon reviewing all of these and then receiving that information, this is what I was afraid was going to happen, that we have a lot of different segments of Rochester set up totally different. Not only along the property rights that the individuals have, but also the homeowners associations and how the one side of town is completely different and made up than this side of town is as well. To where to have this, this, the cost effectiveness needs to be laid out the same, you know, for each individual area like this here. So I, I do think, you know, I appreciate what everyone put forth in here, but I still think it's lacking the end goal of how it's going to potentially affect the community as a whole. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Bavacqua.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about the, the concept of like an ash bore or a lot of dead trees that are have, would have to be dealt with. It's my understanding that those trees would not have to be subject to a permit fee, first of all. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we discussed the concept that they would not count towards the trees that you could take down within a year, which would also, I think, make them not subject to replacement.
Attorney Jeff Crock.
Yeah, so Mayor Protem is absolutely correct. So one of the discussions on the committee was, you know, whether to have the three free trees that we, that we referred to. And it was, it was decided by the committee to, we'll keep the three free trees. But then you would add the permit fee, which really wasn't the homeowners association's issue. But the, we did specifically put in language on page two, which is section twenty dash thirty-one, that the under nominal activity, that's, that's the section that provides for the three free trees. And we actually added language in there that would address the Emerald Ash Bore situation, which it says, if the city determines that a tree is dead, its removal is not counted in that, in that free trees situation. So and then also to Mayor Protem's point, when we talk about the tree removal permit, we specifically added in language in there that no tree removal permit fee is required if the city determines that dead or dying trees are proposed to be removed. So you know, that, that was definitely a, an issue that the CIB committee wrestled with and was sensitive to. And it was decided, if a tree is dead and dying, why would we, why would we make them? Why would they count that towards the three free? And then that went to, well, we shouldn't even charge them a permit fee for it, even though we're still going to expend city time to go make that, you know, go take a look at it. So that, that was addressed in there, maybe, you know, not to everyone's satisfaction, but those were the discussions at the committee level.
Councilmember Sage and then Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So under the purview of the, the Tree Subcommittee, would they address issues raised by this homeowners association for a pre-existing master plan, whatever, for their subdivision to where they could come and appeal to the committee with their, their concerns? And if not, is that something we would add or could add to the ordinance to allow for that engagement?
Mr. City Attorney?
So I know we did have discussions on, when subdivisions were put in, they were required to submit a, a landscaping plan that shows, here's all the trees here, here's the trees there. And, and so the, those, those conditions don't change over time. Now, you, you heard Mr. Kenzick referred to, well, the trees gotten big, they're planted too close together. And that's where, where the city gets involved and tries to work up. You know, Nick, I know Nick gets involved in working with the subdivisions every year. He talks about what their plans are every year. And because if they're, if they're maintaining what's already approved, Nick works with the subdivisions to, to address those situations. So, you know, it could be that if they wanted to clear cut an area that they had, you know, a hundred trees, for instance, they would probably end up having to go to the planning commission at some point because that would be contrary to their approved plan. But Nick is, Nick is kind of trying to be more user friendly when it comes to, you know, that situation. Now, the homeowners association issues that we've had in the past are, if you have three pre, three free per parcel, well, the common areas are generally one person, right? So, you know, is that, is that, is that the right number? You know, for a single homeowner gets three, but an entire common area gets three. And so I, I think Nick maybe can express just a minute of, of how he's addressed those in the past. I mean, he's, he really has worked with the homeowners association on a yearly basis for that.
Mayor, if you'd like me to comment?
Mr. Bandit?
So Attorney Cross is exactly right. So I have a great relationship. I have a baseline, either a landscape plan or a couple of the condo associations. We, they spent some money, went out, hired an arborist, and we locked down where all the trees are. So in Mr. Kenzick's case, there's a certain island that had ten trees. If they come back and they can fill the same space with five trees, and we look at the overall plan, if they have a general common area, there's more trees in there than were ever that naturally produced them, reproduce themselves over a period of time. We're not going to ding them for the extra five trees. So we look at them on individual basis. We've never had less replacement than that was there presently because the numbers just happened to work out. Because people have planted over the years more trees that were above the landscape plan. Nobody's got less trees, they've all got more. So it's not been issued. And Mr. Kenzick had a good point today. When I leave, he's like, well, how do you know the next guy's going to do that or woman's going to do that? I, I can't answer that. I mean, I've been doing eleven years and, and got to go up with the ordinance. So I, the, the committee asked me to put all this stuff in writing. So I'm kind of writing a cookbook of how the existing ordinance and then how the new ordinance amended would be executed. And we're, we're going to make that very thorough. So it doesn't matter who's doing this, they should be able to follow the same thought process that we've done since the inception of the ordinance. So that's taken me a little while, but I'll, I'll get it done in the next few months. And we should take away the fear that it will not be consistently applied forever.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I was gonna tag on to what Attorney Crot said and what Nick just said. First off, thank you, Mr. Kenzick, for your letter, which I read this morning and, and the comments you made. I think we've addressed the diseased trees. And I, again, the committee really did look at the, the example you gave out where you said, if I take out ten trees that are overgrown or bunched together, why plant ten new trees? And Nick's just addressed that. We did not change anything relating to the HOAs in this ordinance. This was established protocol that Nick has been following for the last several years. This is not anything new in the ordinance about the HOAs. We, we deferred to Nick's judgment and, and how he's handled them. And the understanding was, I guess, the excellent example you just gave. Okay, you had ten trees in a common area, they've all grown all over each other. You can't put ten more in as, as, as Mr. Kenzick said, in twenty years you'll have the same problem. So that's why we have people like Nick to do this. That's why the city works with them. So again, I hope we've, we've, we've addressed Mr. Kenzick's concerns. And again, I just wanted to restate, we, you know, two of us are on HOAs and we specifically asked many of the questions that Mr. Kenzick brought up in his letter this morning in the committee to make sure that that voice was well represented on the committee.
Councilmember Keith Lee.
Thank you. I, I'd just like to thank our council members and our residents and the developer that served on the tree committee. I think they put a lot of work and effort into this. I was going to echo Mr. Banda's point that it's important that this be laid out in our ordinance. So that way it's not just a conversation or a relationship that Nick has with a homeowner. It's actually laid out in our ordinance that we can point to. So if that language is being added to address the residents' concern, that makes sense to me. I also appreciate that you addressed the, the development issues. I know Councilwoman Peterson has brought that up on a number of occasions. And I appreciated seeing that in this ordinance. I know you guys have put a lot of work into this. And, and I think that it looks good, but I am appreciative to hearing more feedback from our residents.
Okay, Mr. Kenzick, you had your hand up again?
Yes, thank you. First, you know, I've been working with Nick, I don't know how long, maybe five, six years. I've been in charge of the landscape committee here for our association for like the last eight years. And we've got a very good relationship. And I'll attest to the things that have been said where, you know, with Nick, we've been able to work things out. But, you know, again, part of the concern is Nick may not be there a year or two from now. I may not be there a year for or two for now. So I think there is value in codifying some of the things that we're talking about. So I, I do have that concern. There are some other things in the existing ordinance that probably need to be cleaned up. And if we're going as far as cleaning up a, a big portion of it, why not, you know, clean up some other topics as well?
Thank you. Nick, are you going somewhere in a year or so?
I know, but you never know, lottery.
Nick's not going anywhere. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the issues raised by Mr. Kenzick, can those be addressed or, or the easy ones can be addressed? My question to the city attorney is, does the ordinance in its current fashion or amended fashion offer enough flexibility to where an HOA could come to us and have that discussion with the subcommittee to, to resolve any issues, regardless whether Nick's here or not and whoever's on the subcommittee? Do we have enough flexibility right now?
Mr. City Attorney?
You know, that, that's a great question. Because that was one of the reasons why the subcommittee asked Nick to put his, what, what does he do? And how does he do it? Together. And I think that there, there really, I think, should be two different ways that this goes. One is, I think for the, the purposes of the ordinance amendments before City Council, I think that they can proceed as is, but that doesn't mean that's the end of the discussion on the, on the tree ordinance in the tree committee. Because one of the recommendations is to keep the tree subcommittee and actually codify the subcommittee and add to its powers. And I think at that point, once, you know, it, once Nick puts his, this is how I do it, and this is what we do, maybe that's an opportunity for maybe Mr. Kenzick or anybody else to, to participate in, in providing input. Like, this is what he does. Maybe how can we put this clearer? And this goes to what you're saying, Mr. Sage, is, is maybe we can incorporate more of what he does into the ordinance to give that flexibility. And while the subcommittee went through and, and did a, a major overhaul of several portions, you know, it, it really, could it always be improved? Absolutely. But keep in mind, this also started with the landmark tree issue that I wouldn't want a, a more, you know, a, a few more months of deliberating additional changes to slow down what the original intent was, which is to clean up the landmark tree portion, knowing full well that if the subcommittee is going to continue, it can intend, maybe that's phase two of the review and, and discussions. Maybe there's a concerted effort to address condominium situations that would give that flexibility to, or to say what that looks like. And I think that's, that's not a bad recommendation. I just wouldn't want to hold up the work that's done addressing the issues it was intended to. Because like I think Councilmember Albrecht said or Nick said, is that, you know, most of what's in this is there's really not a whole lot of changes to the condominium provisions. It's just what's in, in redline that was, that was changed. So obviously, black text, that was already, that already exists today.
Okay. Next, next we have a, another citizen with the phone number eight, one, three at the end. If you could identify yourself.
Yes. Yes, this is Terry Crockett. I am the president of the Stony Creek Ridge Homeowners Association. And, and I have been for nine years now and work closely with Rich. And in watching, or at least in watching and listening to comments, I've got a couple of concerns. First of all, my sense is this is being rushed a little bit, especially from the standpoint of if the idea is to rely on the personal relationship of, you know, that we've got with Nick or that Nick's got with the rest of the homeowners association, that is not a process that is sustainable. That's not a process that, you know, is transferable.
I think.
So, so, so that's point number one. That, that's, that's concern number one that I've got. Second of all, with all due respect to Councilperson Albrecht's comments, while he is on a committee, I'm not sure if, if the level of engagement has been to the level of, for example, Rich, who has been our landscape and infrastructure chairman for over ten years, and we've done multiple projects on trees and so forth. I, I'm not sure I'm sensing the same level of engagement, to be perfectly honest. And, and actually working through, coming through scenarios, understanding how that would work and bouncing that against, you know, the ordinance certainly has written. And the other thing that I think is missing is, as part of that is, let's do a, let's do a cost study. I, I'd like to understand the financial implications, not so much on a homeowner that's got three, you know, three trees and is allowed three trees, but on a substantial homeowners association such as ourselves, as other and others, Stony Point, Stony Creek Ridge North, Creekside come to mind. Just think through, do some scenarios, some, some possible outcomes. I, I'm not comfortable at all that this is as thoroughly thought out has been represented, quite frankly. So I, I, I agree with Rich's recommendation that before this gets cast in stone and before this gets, you know, approved, I think it needs some, some, it needs some further thought. And whether or not that's, you know, a couple of months or whatever it is to at least think through that to make sure we're comfortable with that. I, I think it's being rushed, frankly. And I don't agree with the city attorney's opinion to go, keep going forward with this at all.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I'll make a couple of quick comments. One, I, I think, yeah, we absolutely don't want it to be based on a relationship with, with Nick or whoever is in Nick's spots. I think we're all in agreement on that. Two, that, you know, in my view, this has been a long time. But, you know, that's, that's just my opinion. So Councilmember Salvia, you had a comment?
Thank you. Yeah. So I've been listening to a lot of the comments and have been a member of the tree committee. And I do live in Stony Point. For the record, I am not on the board or the association. And I do think that the intent of the tree committee and therefore the, the ordinance changes that are in front of us in no way were intended to be punitive of any homeowners association or the residents of a homeowners association. I, I don't, I don't see it that way. And I certainly do not feel as though this is rushed. I mean, I am the person that wants things done, you know, six months ago, not today. And we have been working on this tree ordinance for at least six months. And this committee has put a lot of time and effort into this and listened and worked. And I do think with the establishment of a tree committee, which is in this ordinance, we will have the tools to continue to listen to the homeowners associations. And if there's something we've missed in this ordinance, a way that we can improve it, we will have the ability to do that. So I see this as a big step forward. And I'm really happy that we're getting the feedback and the input to make sure that we haven't missed something. But I see this as a big step forward.
Mr. Kenzick, do you have another comment?
I do not, no.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I saw your hand up there. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I happen to be in agreement with our callers for a number of reasons. Number one, I also too feel that this is rushed. And I feel that it's rushed because we, you know, we have powers as elected officials to sit and talk and discuss these things together and openly, which this has not been. And I feel that it's rushed because we, you know, we have powers as elected officials to sit and talk and discuss these things together and openly, which this has not been. I appreciate the three council people who sat on the board. I appreciate their time that they put into this. However, when you talk about redoing something to incorporate the diverse nature of our community, we left out the important part of the homeowners association being a representative on there. Whether or not, as a councilperson wearing that hat, as is stated, you truly can't be, you gotta remember what hat you're wearing. I also think that that makeup of that board should be changed if it is to be. I'm not in favor of a tree subcommittee at all because we were all elected to sit here and make these decisions to take care of the public. And then we're now, we're going to have outsiders do this. I think that that subcommittee would be great for helping us lay the groundwork for all of this here, which would include everything that the two gentlemen have spoken of this evening. I also think that what's not been taken into consideration has been the private property rights of the homeowners associations, the individuals that live there. And we don't have a consensus of that. And I don't like that the general public population has not been able to be here to really listen and learn more about this. These virtual meetings are playing a little havoc and people are not happy that they cannot be a part of these meetings. In person, being able to really voice their concerns of this. So I do think that pushing something through, oh, let me go back, there's also more than one piece here. This was stated earlier that the main reason for this was to take care of landmark and historic trees. But here we are revamping the whole entire system and really not getting the right input that is needed to take care of this. So with all due respect to everyone who sat on that, I think that we needed to have more people that had more of a more information that could be more valuable as we are hearing of as of right now. I also think that as an elected official, if we keep taking our role and our authority down and pushing it to other levels, I think it's not good. As we did with our ethics board, that board used to meet and bring us, you know, information that was a solid appointed board. Right now, we've been working with just a subcommittee made up of three council people, which to me is, in all fairness, not something that gives, it's pretty more council oriented instead of community oriented. And I would like to see that change moving forward. I will not be approving any of this tonight, moving forward based on private property rights and not having the right amount of people taking part in this change to the ordinance. Thank you.
Terry, one last comment, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'll keep my comments brief. Councilperson Peterson's comments are absolutely spot on from our perspective. And she said it quite well. I don't think it's been fully vetted with homeowners associations that are large, that are on the east side. So I couldn't, we couldn't agree more with her statement and her position. We'd be happy to participate, not necessarily us, and if somebody else or another homeowners association is a better selection, that's fine. But I don't think the voice has been fully heard and I don't think the implications have been fully thought through. So I won't recap all of her comments, but frankly, they are absolutely spot on and we couldn't agree more with her. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Lavakwa?
Yeah, just a couple of quick points. At the end of Councilmember Peterson's comments, she mentioned that she doesn't like the idea that we're putting council people into too many positions to make decisions. Yet has in the past suggested that it's perfectly fine to put council people on resident positions on boards and commissions. So just wanted to point out that little inconsistency.
This has nothing to do with that, so I would like you to, there are Robert's rules as well here. And you are not to personally attack me in any way, shape or form. Thank you.
It's not an attack.
It was, it has nothing to do with what we're discussing tonight.
We'll just, Mayor Protem, continue please.
And I also agree that it's a good idea to have conversations publicly regarding any changes we're making to ordinances. That's what we're doing here today.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what's our current moratorium on landmark trees? As far as any disposition to that, what did we, where are we at there?
Mr. City Manager?
We had extended it 90 days from some date certain and I can't remember.
The end of July?
The July.
Attorney Croft's actually looking up the actual dates.
Okay, thank you. I think it's the end of July as well, but.
Can't find my recollection.
Yeah, I believe that's the case because we, just the timing of when we looked at, because this would be, if it does move forward today, would just be for first reading and introduction. The next city council meeting is in three weeks. And this would, if it moved to second reading and adoption, then that would fall just inside the end of the moratorium. So that's how we kind of calculated that. So I believe it is the end of July.
Would the subcommittee have enough time then, prior to our next meeting, to meet and discuss some of the concerns from the homeowners associations?
If the subcommittee wanted to, I mean.
Weekly.
Councilmember Albrecht?
I've been sitting here listening and with respect to Mr. Crockett, he is absolutely correct. I do not have the same knowledge skill as Richard and the work he's done on your HOA. All of us spent a lot of time on this. We didn't try to rush this through. We've been meeting for, I don't know, two months. I thought the makeup did address homeowner rights. The city council knew what the makeup was two months ago and we began this journey. I reported publicly that we were going to take on a four goals, not just the landmark tree. So again, no surprises, public information that all city council members and all residents who participated in have heard. I agree that the virtual meetings have not allowed, you know, while we've done everything right within the guidelines that the state has set up for virtual meetings, we've continued to do that. I go back to what I stated before, we didn't touch anything relating to the HOAs in this ordinance, nothing. We were going to continue on the same path that has existed for the HOAs for as long as, you know, they've been coming to city council before even I joined here. All that being said, you know, we do have the tree moratorium at the end of July. Looks like we have our next city council meeting on July 13th, which would be, we could be ready for another first reading if that was the case. And then have a second reading on July 26th or 27th of my memory.
Twenty seven.
Yeah, I'm not looking at a calendar, so I'm open to that. I'm not trying, we're not trying to force anything down anybody's throats. We, I stand with my comments that I made 40 minutes ago was that we came here with something that we proposed would be beneficial to the city, the future of the city, the future of the tree canopy. We did talk specifically about HOAs. I know I'm repeating myself, so some of the comments, you know, made were, did not give the true respect to this committee that the work that was done by the committee. That being said, if we want to meet as a tree subcommittee one more time to lay out a vehicle or a pathway so that the HOAs have a more direction in there, I'll defer to City Manager Croft and Mr. Banda there so we can make sure that that's addressed. Not if not in this initial ordinance, but you know, shortly thereafter. I still think this is a solid ordinance and we need to move forward. But as the chair of this tree subcommittee, I'm willing to continue to meet to get it right.
Okay, so one final comment from Mr. Kinsick, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Again, I'd like to emphasize that our objection from, at least our homeowners association is not with the landmark trees. Quite frankly, I don't even know, well, we have probably a few, but not nearly as many as what might be in other parts of the city. And based upon what Councilman Albrecht's comments were, you know, if he's willing to extend the invitation, whether it's us or another HOA, I think that would satisfy a large part of our concerns.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, before a motion, can I just clarify the.
And then Councilmember Peterson had another comment.
Thank you. So I just checked and the moratorium was extended 45 days from June 7th, which was the end of the last one. So that would be July 22. It was not the end of July, it's July 22 and the current moratorium expires.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. I guess a couple of other things that are in the ordinance that were written is that now we're going to dictate on arbivites. And the use of them can only be 20%. And let's go back to the HOA, the HOA associations, there's quite a few arbivites in those developments as well, as well as here. And 20%, no more than 20% is really telling people what they can do. We all have private property rights as well as the homeowners associations do that control those that are within those associations. So I would like to see that we end up, if this is going to go back, that we ask an HOA to be a part of discussion. So this doesn't come back, as much as I appreciate everyone's hard work and that they actually are part of an HOA. They're not the ones who run the HOA and there are a lot of moving pieces in HOAs today. And I think that that is something that really needs to be looked at. So they, so everyone has equal representation and in an instance of that one, under 2079 with the arbivites, it doesn't leave them with an issue that is going to be hard pressed for their residents as well as themselves handling that. Also, I would really like to, the discussion of having, you know, a tree canopy as being the main focus, I appreciate that as well. We're still not addressing with up to three trees. It's only going to be a $50 permit. I would like to know the reason behind it's only $50. To me, it should be $50 a tree or the cost of what a tree replacement would be of this, not of the exact size tree, but close to that. Because you can't go buy a tree for $50. The whole entire discussion was about having a tree fund that would go ahead and replenish the trees that are being taken down. In this case, it doesn't do that. So no, not that I want to tax people, I'm just trying to make point that some of this doesn't make sense when it comes to private property rights or the rights that a homeowners association would have to live by as well. Whether or not you're going to say they're going to be part of that. And a landmark tree, $150 each for that, that I take was increased a little bit. So and the increase of the fee for the landmarks as well for how much, how you're going to decide what they cost, that as well. There's just a lot of different things in here that I feel this was rushed because this is the first time really getting a full look at this here. And having just a couple of days to really review it since it was received online. So, thank you.
So we have this resolution in front of us. This is for first reading and adoption. So in theory, if there's a motion, then there's three weeks before the next meeting. Or if there's not a motion, then it can go back to the committee. So I think we've kind of discussed this a bunch. So does council have a preference?
I would like to see it go back to the committee to address all the concerns that were raised this evening.
Councilmember Salvia?
Yep, so I think it's important that we give a second opportunity for the homeowners association to hear the true essence of the ordinance as proposed. My concern is if we put it forward for first reading and adoption, if the committee wants to make some changes, then it would have to go back through again, correct?
City Attorney?
If you, if the action tonight is to move it for first reading and introduction, then if there's changes that are requested at the next hearing, it depends on what the nature of the changes are. If they're not very major changes, then you can just continue with second reading and adoption with those changes that are brought up at the meeting. You don't have to start all over again. But if there are major changes, that's good practice to then move that one for first reading and introduction. It just depends on the level of change from one to the next meeting.
So I don't think we're going to have significant overhaul or changes to this recommended ordinance. So I would like to make a motion to move this forward for first reading and introduction with the stipulation that I think we have an open meeting with all homeowners associations, specifically inviting the their tree committee, their arbors, so that we can get there, we can have some discussion around this.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Salvia, support by, who's that?
That was Dean.
Mayor Protem, support by the Mayor Protem, discussion, Councilmember Sage?
I'd like to amend the motion to extend, if this same motion could also, in conjunction, extend the moratorium on the landmark tree issues beyond whatever date that we would come up. So if we took it to second reading and adoption, that is what day, the 27th? So that would not coincide. Could we extend the moratorium on landmark trees so that it does coincide with whatever actions we take on this ordinance?
The city clerk, you had a comment?
The cleaner way to be, to do that, Councilmember Sage, would be to have a new moratorium resolution at the July 13th meeting to extend that rather than
Okay.
About a resolution versus your ordinance right now. So those are really two separate things. And since we still have another meeting, if that would be what council's direction or the tree committee's direction is to the city attorney at that point in time, that would be cleaner.
Thank you, city clerk, I retract my amendment.
Mayor Protem Lavakwa?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm in agreement, you know, that we should communicate with the HOAs. I'm always in favor of transparency and communication. I do not feel there's any reason to rush this specific change in ordinance along without getting, you know, some input. We have time to manage that and I'm glad we're going to hear a few more points of view.
Very good. Terry, did you have one more comment? No?
I'm sorry.
Did you have another comment? I saw your hand up.
No, no, I just, I just wanted to make sure that all of the council members know, and specifically Councilmember Albrecht, that we appreciate what the, you know, city council process is. We've worked with the council before on this. Some of you may recall, we brought forward the, our LED light program that's worked out very well for us. I personally participated on the chief's fire commission study. So I understand, we have a, I think, a pretty good appreciation of what goes on, the steps you need to go through, the due diligence that you have to go through. And so we appreciate that. So this was not necessarily an indictment of that process, other than sometimes it becomes apparent that maybe there are some other points of view or some other perspectives that would be helpful in that process. That's basically our position going forward. And I guess I just wanted to reiterate that in case there was any misunderstanding or misconception about our point of view. So I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you and thank you for participating tonight. Councilmember Keith Lee?
Thank you. The only point I wanted to make or ask was I think that the concentration of this ordinance was really on landmark trees. There didn't seem to be any concern about the changes that were made there. I think you guys really went in line by line and laid out what we needed in order to preserve our landmark trees and our historic trees. Do we still need a moratorium on that? Because it seems like that language, no one had any concerns or problems with.
The ordinance, we still need the moratorium.
Okay.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, so I did have concerns of the landmark tree ordinance still because some of these changes that have taken place in here are a little extreme. And still, nothing was addressed regarding the private property rights because all you're going to allow is you're going to have a tree subcommittee tell, dictate to our constituents what the fate of their tree situation is, instead of coming before the live body of all of us elected. instead of coming before the live body of all of us elected officials to do so. I think a tree subcommittee was perfect for putting together, if this was ready to go and had incorporated HOAs in that, the tree subcommittee can present this to us, but then the tree subcommittee goes away and all people would abide by the ordinance and come before city council. To me, this is not being addressed yet and it needs to be addressed. We cannot continue going through having tree subcommittee people and having people go before that, wait ten days before they can file an appeal. Some things can't take that amount of time. And I did not see a whole lot in here regarding what the actual commercial developers are actually doing and still doing in the community today when they are digging up and tearing down buildings and going up to other property lines where big trees currently are and endangering the big trees that are currently there, that is going to put the burden on the homeowner where the tree is still currently at, even though the tree roots were in, under a parking lot. There's many little issues that need to go through here to have more discussion. So not in favor of this motion at all tonight, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I just wanted to mention that these, this tree issue is pretty far reaching. It runs across a lot of different areas and departments. We, we, in planning commissioner, looking at lot coverage percentages and the impacts of hardscaping a lot of the, the residential properties to address Councilmember Peterson's concerns about that. Yes, it is an issue. It's, it's oddly something that you probably can't really address in a tree subcommittee because it's a little bit more of a, a planning commission issue. So that was actually something that we discussed at the last planning commission meeting. I, I will be giving a little bit of an update on that later, later in the evening.
Thank you for that. I think that's where, at this point though, Mayor, I have a problem with those. You've been moving this forward because there are a lot of unanswered questions and this is supposed to be our abiding document for the residents and people who come to this community to look to for guidance.
Thank you. So I'd just like to say, one, I appreciate the hard work of the committee. I think the, the amount of work you guys done is fantastic and I absolutely appreciate it. And that's, to me, this is exactly what we wanted from the tree subcommittee is to go through it line by line. So thank you very much. Also, I just will add, remember always a subcommittee has to come before the full city council. So there's decisions, final decisions are not being made. Subcommittees, it's always a recommendation for the full city council.
Excuse me. It states though, that it would be, they would have to appeal if they did not like their decision from the tree subcommittee. So I guess I'd need clarification.
Right. Well, and then it would eventually come back to the city council. But this, this ordinance has to come to the.
Three council members, three council members.
Right. So.
Excuse me. This is not about three council members, Mayor. This is about, this is about our whole entire community and there are seven of us who should be doing the deliberation after we receive an ordinance, not going before a subcommittee to make the decisions for private property owners and their rights.
And they can appeal that to the city council.
Why, why should anyone have to appeal this, Mayor? They should be able to come before us and then appeal it. That's how it should be done, not in a subcommittee with unelected people. They're not the ones who were.
Okay. Thank you. Matt and clerk, the role, please.
Nixon.
Yes.
Bavakwa.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keithley.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
And then we'll have Nick and city staff and Mark Albrecht, Councilman Albrecht, get together to let the HOAs know when the next, when you guys are going to have a meeting to talk about these things. And, and again, I, I agree, you know, we don't have to rush it, transparency, and we'll, we'll move forward this way. Okay. Next is a resolution regarding remote meeting participation. So I'll just give a brief opening and then let Blaine talk about this as well. So the, the governor allowed us to have these Zoom meetings due to the coronavirus emergency. This is going to end eventually, probably, you know, when, when she, when she does. So then we are going to have to go back to some kind of, um, meeting where, according to the city attorney, we have to have a meeting at a building and, um, and it has to be room with social, with social distancing for the public to attend. Now, according to the city attorney, we could have a full city council or we could have one city council person, you know, probably the chair, could be there and everybody else could be participate by Zoom. In the past, we have not allowed people to participate in Zoom on any of our boards and commissions, but we, we don't have to do that. So really what this discussion is, is again, when the governor decides what to do, we are eventually going to have to change and we can literally go from having one person there to the whole entire city council. And that's really what's, what we were discussing tonight. So Mr. City Manager, did you have anything to add?
Uh, yes, just to note that the governor did extend, so what was in the materials on Thursday afternoon, the governor has anticipated, we did say that we, we thought the governor might extend the ability through the following month, which he has done. So through July thirty-first, whatever, I don't remember, thirty-first, is extended to allow remote meetings. What the attorney has drafted is the ability for up to ninety days after the governor's executive order expires. So this would not go into effect, which was written in here on, at the end of June, which was the previous executive order, it would be at the end of July. However, we wrote it in such a way, so whenever the executive order stops allowing remote meetings, this new hybrid, if you will, would be allowed. And as you stated, Mayor, you know, the hybrid would require a physical location with a minimum of one individual from that board, council, or commission. In this case, it would be the, the city council. But that would be up to discussion. If you guys wanted to adjust that to be two or three members as a minimum. And Attorney Crone, I don't know if you want to provide any additional comments.
Attorney Crone.
Yeah, so that, that's a pretty good summary. So there is, you know, it's, it's a well-accepted interpretation of the Open Meetings Act that there, there is requirement to have a physical place and a physical presence by the board and the public having that space to physically go to. So the, all these executive orders by the, the governor, that she's actually suspended, that's where she suspended, was the requirement to have a physical location, physical presence at these, these public meetings. So at some point, it's going to change. And other cities, they do allow some participation remotely as a matter of course. What's before you is just, is a temporary, the, the thought is ninety days. Because when the doors do open, if, when, you know, when the doors have to open, I should say, you know, not everyone's going to want to rush in to, to a meeting. I mean, we do have space in council chambers, but I'm sure there'll be a social distance requirement when, when those do come into place. So, you know, the, the idea is, you know, do you want to allow board and council members to continue to participate remotely as well as the public? Because if you know, I mean, as you recall, before this all happened, the members of the public couldn't call in like they do now. And so this would allow the public to participate in the same fashion as they are now as well. So paragraph three is, is probably the, you know, once you get to the conceptual, do you want to allow a form of remote participation? You know, there's, there's no magic requirement. I mean, I've seen some that say, as long as there's a, a quorum of that board present, you can do it. That's not during pandemic times. That was just a matter of, of how they did things. Or you can have a percentage, you can have, say, a third or twenty-five percent, or you can just pick the number. And so that's not a magic number. I'm not pushing a particular number. But if city council likes the concept, this is the framework that, that can be used to allow both public and board membership to participate remotely. So long as a, you know, once the physical location requirement and physical presence requirement is no longer suspended, because you, you have to meet that to meet open, open meetings act requirements.
And, and again, I think tonight, maybe this is just for discussion to take back to, you know, administration for them to come back. But, you know, this is, this is new territory. You know, we've never allowed Zoom participation in any of our boards and commissions, but, you know, obviously the world has changed. So that's what, that's what's going to be discussion for tonight. So is there discussion? Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So procedurally on the resolution, the fifth, whereas I think we need to update that to reflect the, the new executive order, twenty-twenty dash one twenty-nine, extending through July thirty-first, and then the ninety-day additional would apply to that date certain, correct?
That, that's correct. It's a kind of a ruling. If it's extended again, you wouldn't have to come back again, because it's just, it's put in place.
Thank you.
Councilmember Keithley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to express my support to continue allowing people to call in. I think it's incredibly valuable to hear from our residents. And I also think it eliminates some of the barriers that they might have to participate, even once we get back into council chambers. I'm thinking of homebound seniors can participate with this call-in option, whether we look to keep that permanently or just temporarily during this pandemic. I think it's so important to keep our residents safe and this is a good option to do that.
Good. Councilmember Peterson.
I appreciate Amanda, Councilmember Keithley's, a point on the seniors and having other people have other options when they can't get in to do that, because I've heard a lot of concerns about not having the opportunity to really, you know, have an option to do this because not all of them have technology. I actually think we should start planning on finding a location that we could do this, even if it's at the fire station or somewhere where there's enough room. But I do think that the way our cameras are set up in our council chambers with the new system, we would be able to sit in there appropriately and meet all the guidelines with the seven of us, even if the clerk was, was remote and the attorney and anyone else was remote to where we could actually be there. And then we could at least allow residents to come in, meeting the ten and under at the moment. So that, then it's the current executive order right now. So I think that would be one start.
So council, I guess the key question is, is do we think that council members should be allowed to participate via Zoom into the future? Mayor Pro Tem, Bavakwa.
And just to share a little story of something I saw today. There was a high-level executive on Ford, uh, uh, from Ford on TV and talking about the fact that, yeah, things have, things have really changed. There, they've sent out a survey to many of their staff members after determining that the efficiency hasn't dropped with folks staying at home. They sent out a survey to find out whether people want to return to work, whether they want to return to work part-time, whether they want to stay home full-time. And I think they're going to do like an assessment of, you know, how much they can save in terms of overhead on office space and other things. So, so I, I just, to put it into context, I, I, I think the world is changing and, and it may look a little different in the future than it, than it, than it did in the recent past. So we should be open to, to a different reality.
Councilmember Keithley.
Thank you. I might also add that allowing our council members to participate over Zoom will allow more people into council chambers to ask their questions and participate. So if there's seven of us all in city hall, then we can only have three residents. But if we are, most of us are remoting in, then more residents who maybe don't have a telephone or can't access us online are able to be at city hall to participate.
Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. So, but in, in general though, this may, many people may like this as the new normal, but as an elected body, we have a duty to be there for the people. And this does not allow us to actually be there for constituency to just be at Zoom or whatever. I think that just, just because I stated three doesn't mean that we cannot allow people to come in if we have potential seating for them. And if we know in advance of people coming, we can make accommodations. Most people do not want to stay for the whole meeting. They've always just been kind enough to do so. But I do think that we need to get back to doing, our, taking our role seriously as an elected official and find a way to have our city offices open. Because if that's the case, that we're going to get away from this, then we're going to have to revamp a lot of things because there's no accountability with everybody on Zoom. And I'm not referring to us for the city council meetings. I'm referring to that regarding city administration and employees and things like that. So I'm glad other companies are make, taking their surveys and that, but theirs is about profit, ours is about community, and it is two different things.
Further comments, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm also in support of continuing a virtual medium to, to conduct our business. I don't think that it's required that we have physical contact with the citizenry. In fact, this, this platform offers unlimited opportunity for members of Rochester to attend and be fully accountable as we are fully accountable to them via recording and their input on this medium. If we continue on and social distancing is, is a concern and will be until we have a way to mitigate the virus, we're going to continue this, this way. And we are going to limit the opportunity for having an in, in-person meeting. So I'm in support of going forward with the governor's wishes and, and with ours here, giving us the flexibility, ninety days past that, to make the right decision.
Councilmember Salvia.
Yes, thank you. So I, I really am intrigued by the hybrid concept because I think what's important is to give, you know, we want to be open, we want to be transparent, we want to communicate, and we want to provide people all of those options. And so I think the hybrid concept, you know, gives opportunities for council to be there physically. It gives opportunities for residents to be there physically. But it also, I've been thinking about the fact that we've had maybe some different people call into our meetings and make comments that maybe they wouldn't have done that in the past. So, you know, like many things in this very unusual environment, that hybrid or trying to accommodate just, you know, fifty percent of the people think one way and fifty percent of the people think the other way. So the hybrid gives opportunity to both of those from a communication and availability standpoint. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So what if we were to send a poll out to the residents to really get their input as well, if they have many, to see who actually has the options? And, you know, we have an aging demographic here. So do they all have the option of watching online? I know we're not one hundred percent online yet today, are we? City manager?
I don't know. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager.
But I guess I need some clarification by not being.
Are we live online on TV for the residents?
We are through our website, through the YouTube channel, as well as two of the three major public access channels.
Which is currently Comcast. I just, I just, I'm sorry, are you finished, Councilmember Peterson?
Well, no, I, I'm, it's fine. Just wanted to know.
Okay. I, I mean, to me, the hybrid is the best of both worlds where they, you can do it through technology, or if you don't have technology, then you can come to city hall. So I mean, both options are, are open. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, I just had a question about this technology. I'm, I'm, I'm not really aware, if, if someone just has a phone, can they call in to this meeting and then hear? can they call in to this meeting and then hear everyone and everything that's going on?
Yes, you, you could hear everybody, yes.
Yeah, so you, you may have to guess at some points who's speaking, but usually if the meeting's being run as it should be, the person's called upon by the mayor and then they speak and then the next person's called upon. So, um, so you can follow along with a, a, a meeting with just a phone.
Right. And, and also I think it's, 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 it's up to each individual council person. I mean, if they feel, if they feel like they need to be at city hall, then they can come to city hall if they, if others don't. Um, that's up to each individual elected uh official. Council member Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with the upgrade to our uh AV system in council chambers, I, I thought that that was to include the last uh provider.
That's correct. AT, AT&amp;T is in process right now with uh CMNTV to set up the correct IP and other components.
So that would then give all residents access uh through any uh cable station or cable network that they have to view a live meeting, correct?
Correct.
So Mr. City Manager, are we looking for, you know, I mean, to me, i- i- it seems like a nod to the head that people want a hybrid system. Do we need?
I, I think that's sufficient for me tonight.
Okay. To come back with something for the meeting next week or next time?
Yes, in three weeks, we'll, 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 we'll bring uh some additional information and I can talk about, um, you know, how the council chambers would be set up um for both to allow, I guess, the full council or a minimum amount of council, maximum amount of uh public. We, and, and then by then hopefully we'll have some updated executive orders that might, you know, increase the number of people. Um, you know, we could also look at actually using some of our conference rooms to have just how we're using, you know, our main conference room with a video chat capability by placing other individuals maybe into another council, you know, or another, excuse me, another uh room and still participating in uh the meeting.
Good. Uh, council member Albert?
Um, uh, uh, city manager Wing, as, as you're doing that, um, I, I liked one of the ideas I think council member Peterson brought up, which was we have the firehouse, you know, we could spread out people there. We could use the conference room you guys are sitting in and the c- city chambers as we, as you develop the hybrid model, you know, just until where people could remote in and be safe so we can have more than ten people in city hall if we needed to or ten people in the firehouse and a few people upstairs where you guys are sitting, just to get more voice for some of those people. Just, I just say, just look at the, I fully support the hybrid model.
Okay.
Council member Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Another thought, um, how much would it cost us to um actually utilize our community house for our city council meetings? And then we could actually really um engage the public and let them be a part if they chose to be.
Um, that's something we can look at.
Yeah, it depends on, I mean, quite honestly, with the new council chambers, it might be the, the same amount of people. It's right now the governor's uh restrictions.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about after those are lifted.
Ah, okay.
Anything further on this? All right. So Mr. City Manager, you'll come back with something?
I will.
At the next meeting. Okay, thank you. Next is reports on regular business. This first is the authorization to public pension obligation bond notices. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, yes, and I'm also going to pull Anthony in on this one. Um, this is, yep, so Anthony, uh, I'll, I'll just give a, a brief intro and then if you could get into the details. So um city council may uh recall that we discussed uh going out to uh issuance uh for bonding to cover the uh ninety-five percent of the liability for our current uh pensions. Um, the next step is the forty-five day uh notice period. Um, part of the motion that was made during that discussion was to wait until the newspaper, which uh, which is the Post, the local newspaper um is printing again, that has now uh occurred. And um we, we do anticipate either the hybrid or some form of meeting here, here shortly. So um Anthony, if you want to walk through uh really the, the request and the recommendation?
Sure, Mayor. Uh.
Anthony, yeah, Anthony, I see, I, I see you twice up there on my screen.
Yes, yes, it's because I'm going to be, uh, I got one on the laptop, but I don't have a mic for it. So I have my, um, I got a screen share for the next agenda item.
Thought you were showing us your twice as good as us technology-wise.
Not only do I want to attend the meeting, I want to attend it multiple times.
There you go. Thank you.
So the uh, yeah, Blaine mentioned the summary that that's spot on. So when we read the motion, it was uh to authorize the publication of the notice, but not until the governor lifts the stay-at-home order due to the pandemic. Uh, since the Post, as Blaine mentioned, is now circulating again and uh the stay-at-home order was lis- lifted. We believe that um we, that that has been met. Uh, but of course, intent is everything. So we wanted to make sure that we uh council was in agreement that it is all right to do the publish. That'll start the right of referendum. The comprehensive uh or the uh, the financial plan uh had been posted um um from the May eleventh council meeting uh on the website. So, so that has been published and has been there. So we're just looking, uh, the motion was actually already made, I guess, just confirmation that there are no issues with us publishing it. And then um i- if that is okay and we can still meet the Thursday deadline for this week, if not the following week, um, then we'll get an updated calendar on where that will um, will the rollout for the referendum, when the notice will go out and when we might look at actually doing the issuance of, for the bonds.
Uh, the city clerk, you had a comment?
Yeah, as far as timing for this week, usually the cutoff date is on the Friday before. And with this being a rather large um publication, they probably won't be able to fit it in this week, Anthony. It'll probably have to be next Thursday.
Yep, then that would start the new timeline and, and then we'd uh, we'll do the updated calendar to share then as well.
Council member Sage?
Uh, just a question, I mean, as long as the city attorney's in, in agreement, that, yeah, we move forward.
So Mr. City Manager, do you need a, a, a resolution or just a head nod?
Again, just, just a confirmation. So a head nod is fine because the uh, the motion, we're just confirming. Unless there was uh really some, some uh issue, then we would continue to move forward.
Um, I would say move forward.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, just one request though. You know, on our city website though, can we find a way to shrink some of the COVID and share the screen to where you can post important things like that on the main screen at that time for the public? Because the public is not going to know where to look for this information.
Sure, we can make it more pro- prominent and we can also actually create a link right on that front page that brings uh, brings anybody to the information on the finance page.
Well, I know many will appreciate that because they actually brought it up that they, they would like to uh be able to give some input on that.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Let's move forward with that as quickly as we can. Next is a budget amendment for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Uh, Mr. Anthony?
Absolutely. Here is screen share.
All right. The first screen share of the night.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, all right. Hopefully this is coming in okay here.
Yeah.
Um, the uh, obviously from, shrink that over there. Okay, here we go. Uh, so end of the year, um, the state law requires budget amendments cannot be made retroactively into the prior year. So although we do quarterly budget amendments, the next quarterly report would technically be the second meeting in July for the end of June thirty. And since that's into the next fiscal year, we cannot make any amendments to that June thirty year-end time. So um every year we uh, we always have the last um kind of budget amendments for the year that we put forward. And that's why this is um outside of the normal quarterly reporting. Um, the, it's a relatively lengthy memo, so I'm not going to read it, obviously, or, or go into all of those uh, the nuances. I'll hit just a couple really quick key pieces. Um, and that's that overall, the city, anyone listening, viewers, residents, businesses, we're, we're in uh solid financial shape. The planning, the multi-year budgeting, the fund balance policies, we're really hitting the stress test on it uh this year. So we're really seeing uh just how well those policies hold up in an emergency and pandemic and very more lengthier one than we probably would want on a normal time. Uh, but we're really seeing how that comes through. Um, one thing that was brought up and I did note in the memo that the uh most recent um report was attached. Um, I did realize uh earlier today that that was not the case. Um, I did forget to attach it. So um I did want to share for the uh, the public as well to see the um impact report. And then that will, um, I will give that to the city manager to go out into the manager's report to council. Uh, but this is where we're at uh currently. Um, so when we talk about the CARES Act and some of these grant reimbursements, there, there's not reimbursements for um everything at this point in time. So on this sheet here, um, this section here for revenue impact, at this point in time, there's no approved uh grants or reimbursements for loss of revenue. This is an area that um, that has been talked about, um, that was put in, I believe they call it the Heroes Act that the, the House had passed. Um, and, and that was addressing some of the revenue impact to local uh government. So that has not at this point have any sort of funding. So the largest contributor of that is the parking fund. So that's where the, the dollars that are lost uh weekly um from uh, from the revenue standpoint um right now is, is not a reimbursable item. The section up here for city purchases, these are the items we had to purchase for um remote needs, whether it was laptops, did they, did a worker have a laptop at home or internet uh in some instances? We needed to supply hotspots, um, printers, you know, anything that was needed to make sure that the city services, as much as the governor's orders allowed, were not shut down. We were in full operation. We were doing building permits. We were doing planning commission. I, there was nothing we were um having to stop doing because we were remote with the caveat of the governor's orders. If, you know, it was no, you can't do it, then obviously we were, we were following the orders on that one. The expect, uh, expense impact, the largest contributor of that one is the hazard pay as, as city manager Wing mentioned earlier, um, or premium pay as I noted it in here, but the, the, just a switch of words. Um, so this is the current um ending as, as it has expired. So this is the, the net amount for it. This is per our meeting with uh the county. This is reimbursable under the CARES Act. We will not be able to get this reimbursed um under the uh FEMA Public Assistance Act because the uh, the actual hazard pay had to have been in agreement for an event prior to the start date. And the declaration was January first. So if you were, say, like I believe Oakland County was or any other municipalities that maybe had a hazard pay component in and already established by resolution or contract, um, then the feds uh through FEMA would be able to apply for that reimbursement. As of right now, the, we do not meet that qualification, that qualifier, but um according to Oakland County, the consultants that they have hired, um, if the federal assistance grants, if that is not something you can get, they will cover it uh through the CARES Act. So we will be making a submission, especially since this is the largest of our expenses. Um, uh, hopefully this Friday, um, we, you, you, uh, council adopted the resolution and passed that tonight. That was the first step uh to get this um all set to go. So as soon as the county's okay to receive a submittal, um, now that the resolution is set and the agreement's in place, uh, we're going to make that submittal. So that is the largest of the expenses we've had so far and hopefully we're going to be able to uh, to see that. Um, in the lower section here, uh, we have it just by month from, so March, it was the partial month. I believe it was the twenty-second or twenty-fourth, right around then when this all officially started. And we have April, May, and so far uh for June. So that's kind of the highlight on the expense side. So grand totaling and impact to the city, uh, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand and the five eighty-four with hopefully the majority of the three eighty-one, three sixty-three is then received. Now I will also note, even though we're at a surplus, uh, a smaller surplus than what was originally budgeted for in uh, for the city, this amount and any reimbursements that are not received is not budgeted for. So there, this, any part of this reimbursement for these items here that are eligible for the CARES uh dollars through the county are not in the budget as a revenue. So that surplus is the surplus as it stands. It hasn't been um, you know, put in that, oh, you know, to take into account this extra uh potential reimbursement. So that will just, any dollars that come in will just be on top of, of that. So with that, um, I won't, I'll just open it up if there's any questions, uh, Mayor, if that's all right. And then uh, we'll, we'll just keep that uh short. And like I said, the, the explanation, lengthier detail is, uh, was included in the packet.
Thank you, Anthony. I just want to say thank you for that. And, you know, obviously, uh, this pandemic has cost us a lot of money and I think this council, you know, was wise to be very conservative because, you know, there's a lot of costs and there, there still could be more. So um, we have to be very mindful of this. Uh, council member Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Anthony, I just wanted to clarify. So the three eighty-one premium pay expense and the fifty thousand city purchases, those are the ones we would be submitting for under the CARES Act, correct?
Uh, the three eighty-one would be for the CARES Act, this section, as well as any legal fees associated with it. Uh, that would be correct. Um, the county through the CARES Act stated that they want any eligible expenses that can be applied through the FEMA Public Assistance Grants. They want that exhausted first before they would cover it. So yes, they would cover it. Uh, but they want to see that the public assistance grant doesn't. In this case, um, there wasn't anything in the public assistance grant that would disqualify this as being uh reimbursable. So we will be um applying for the public assistance grant first. Um, and then if that is um approved, then we're good. If it's not, then the, that same submittal would then go to Oakland County to say, hey, uh, we need this, uh, here's the federal uh FEMA Public Assistant Grant. They denied this part. Um, Oakland County's uh through the, the call, conference call that we had in question and answer session um had already stated that these items were eligible. So we would then submit it to them.
Okay, thank you, Anthony, for the clarification. Council member Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Anthony, for the report um and information. Question, did, did the, did anyone give any idea how long it would take to receive these funds though?
That was uh definitely a topic of conversation. Um, there, there was not a set answer, but what they said is they have the money and they're going to take it. It's not first come, first served. They said if you have expenses, submit them. It's going to then go to, uh, they got to uh commit the consultants and the, the committee that's handling it. They will then take it to the next board meeting. So they're going to vet it first, say yes, it does or doesn't meet it. Then it's going to go to the commission, uh, the board to um approve at that point. So um they wouldn't nail down a timeline to say we're, you know, some had said, well, what if we have expenses in November? Um, because really for the federal uh public assistance grant, that expires um December thirteenth of twenty-one. So any expenses we have for the, for FEMA, we can keep applying through the end of twenty twenty-one. So the county didn't say that it's a set time or anything other than just give us the information. give us the information, turn in the request, we'll take it to the board and we'll get you, and as soon as it's approved, we'll get you the funding. So that's why we're kind of, on my side, I want to, since we know this can't go through the public assistance grant, we want to get this to the county ASAP. Because I want to see, just as you're inquiring, kind of what their timing is, how that process works, and how quick is it?
Well, Mayor, if I may follow up? Okay, so my concern, though, is the length of time, not only just the length of time, what if they, we are a very small community, all right? So our numbers are large for our small community. And if everyone is doing this, I mean, are they afraid they're going to run out of money to where some of these would not? I'm just looking at worst-case scenario of us. How will we be if we really don't get any of this back?
So sure. Yeah, I was just going to say, you were sitting in the subcommittee meetings with the county, if you have some.
Let me add some insight here. This is Blaine, City Manager. So basically, the county is wanting these now so that they could make sure that they can cover all of the items that are eligible only for the CARES and not for the FEMA ones. What they actually were more, seem to be more concerned about, that they might have still more dollars left instead of not having enough. With the $35 million that they've set aside for this overall, for the municipalities, that's why they want us to get these in as soon as possible. I made a request, you know, really to get this moving so that we could potentially even get the money during this fiscal year. And several other communities also, you know, echoed that. I'll continue to work with our representative and Corfendurfer to make sure that, you know, our requests that are designated as qualifying will actually get through, through the various stages of this. So I'm very hopeful that at least that 381 number will get paid for. They even looked at, and they discussed different types of funding, going to the CBDG component, going on a percentage, percentage of population, or percentage of confirmation of COVID-related cases actually in the community or on staff. So they've looked at all those things, but the county really has decided, give us your actual costs, and then we'll add them up and see.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Councilmember Albrecht?
Oh, yeah. Anthony, good job on this. I just wanted a little education here. I was looking on the general fund highlight on the first page where you had 58.2 is the projected surplus. Adding in the 381 would bring us to 439. If I was sitting here a year ago in a normal year, what would have been the surplus a year ago for that?
Sure, the original was around 283 was what the plan was. So this would actually bump it up even above that.
Okay, so I just want to call it, you know, again, city administration and your office and your people have done a great job of this. I've liked how you've kept us up to date on the COVID-19 costs, the, you know, the build graph that you have on the bottom of the page you just showed. And, you know, fingers crossed that we get all a portion, or if not all of the 381, which would almost double our surplus from what was budgeted if we come up at 439. So that speaks volumes to how conservative, as the mayor had said, we handled ourselves during this. Thank you.
Any other questions for Anthony? Councilmember?
Yes. So, so building upon Councilmember Albrecht's comments, so the discussion at hand for council is the budget amendments for the ending 2019, 2020 budget year, which even if we don't get any of the money refunded through CARES or other sources, net-net, we're positive 58,000 to the bottom line. So net-net, we're in good shape. So I'd like to make a motion to amend, make the budget amendments as proposed by city administration for the 2019, 2020 budget.
Motion by Salvia, support by Albrecht. And discussion on the motion?
I guess I have a question for Anthony, and this is kind of a, I guess, a procedural question. Councilmember Keithley and I kind of had a discussion regarding whether, considering the circumstances, something like this should be presented in the budget subcommittee prior to coming to council. And really, that's just a question, you know, what are the thoughts of administration and Anthony in particular?
Sure, yeah. We had that discussion as well. I'll tell you, the only reason that I did not move forward with that is really the timing for this. So amendments were still coming in, and we were still making changes up to the nth minute of this going into the packet. So in hindsight, I thought, well, if we're gonna, if this is going to go on the packet already, it's kind of, you know, here's the information, it's done. Is that worth having, you know, there's nothing really to talk about necessarily with the subcommittee. But then on the hindsight side, to your point, and is maybe that even though the amendments and everything would be done, we could still have the meeting to have discussions on it. So I think going forward, I think I'm leaning that, and that would make sense, if that makes sense to council, that even in this instances where it's got to go in the packet and already is essentially finalized, that we would still maybe kind of have like a debrief kind of thing from the subcommittee.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Anthony, I guess I'm confused. How fluid are these amendments to where it could not be even discussed with the subcommittee? I guess I don't understand the procedure here.
Oh, sure. So the, essentially, we're looking at projections for the year end by excruciating detail at the department heads for every single one of their budget line items. We're getting numbers in for all the city projects, from the engineers, from, you know, where are things at? Where do we think this is going to end up? What are the estimates looking like? We're trying to get it as accurate as possible. So, and that even includes the waiting, you know, for payroll to go through so we could see what the final hazard payout amounts end up coming. So all these things are very fluid and changing. And so the goal is to get it, obviously, as accurate as possible. And that took us even up into and including on Thursday of gathering information to make sure that we were right on course. So that was kind of different than the normal quarterlies where, you know, the quarter ends, we can review where we're at, put the amounts together, and, you know, have time for a meeting because there's, you know, at least three weeks and, you know, from when the quarter ends to where the, it's presented to have that, those discussions.
And this was a unique year because of the COVID component. So going forward, you know, even if we need to schedule the Thursday in the afternoon with the subcommittee, maybe at 1:00, 2:00 o'clock, when we can have the numbers. I know Anthony and his staff are just finalizing them for the packet that afternoon. So, you know, with the COVID, this just added another layer of difficulty to get these budget amendments in through a final calculation.
Okay, I appreciate the sentiment moving forward of trying to involve the subcommittee as much as possible. Mr. Mayor, we're just having discussion on the motion to approve the budget amendments. So.
Sorry about that, everybody. I just went out, wouldn't come back.
That's all right. I guess it's just a matter, any more discussion or calling the motion, I'll hand it back to you.
Okay, thank you. So so the motion to accept the the fiscal year budget amendments? Call the roll.
Then you just need to roll call.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Vavakwa?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keithley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the city manager's request for compensatory time. Pay out an amount of $2,104.12. Mr. Manager?
Yep. So as we discussed last year, I would use at least 40 hours out of the 80 hours that, you know, once I've reached that amount are eligible, similar to myself and the department heads and assistants. Prior to the COVID amount, I had used over the 40 hours. I was at 44 hours. And then I did, you know, I had used one vacation day so far during that time. And now I do plan at the end of next week to use some more vacation time. So as this, the comp time gets paid out during the fiscal year, we're coming to an end. And so similar to last year, based on my contract, it's city's councils, it's at your sole discretion. So the information in the packet, again, spells that out. The calculated amount of 36 hours comes out to, as you stated, the $2,104.12. And that is my request.
Motion, anybody?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Sage, support by Councilmember Salvia. Discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Vavakwa?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keithley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yep.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a discussion of the extension of the free public parking. Mr. City Manager?
Just want to explain that. Yeah, so currently, council has approved through the end of June for the free parking. Again, just to remind everybody, and maybe people who are watching either through the reporting or out there, the DDA has also homing up more than 50% in regards, you know, to help offset the cost with our bonding for the parking structures and our overall parking system. Since it's expiring, I, you know, drafted in the memo that I'm requesting at a minimum for it to be extended through the month of July, as a lot of our businesses and restaurants have just opened. However, I've also, you know, provided a few other options. The other ones were through the end of August and/or through Labor Day holiday weekend. I will note that the DDA did offer to provide their cost-sharing portion through the end of September. However, working with our finance staff along with our other staff here, all the way through the end of September is going to really put a financial challenge for us on our parking revolving fund. So the longest would be through the September 7th, 11:59 PM. So through the Labor Day weekend and/or as short as the end of July. And that's for council's consideration.
Council. Mayor Protem Vavakwa?
I'm comfortable with July. I don't know, I prefer to have flexibility moving beyond that. That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually comfortable through September based on the DDA's movement so far so that we mirror their actions.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. And I was going to echo that as the DDA liaison. We are till then. However, we do have, I forget, Nick can help me, we have, what, 17% of the meters being used currently off of Main Street. And I actually think going until the end of July and then looking at how things are at that point to align with the state's orders, I think then we might be able to go forward and go back and resume paid parking only because the amount of money that's being taken from the DDA, they're not getting reimbursements for all the things that the city has. And I think we need something to help fund this year. People are getting out and about. So I think it's something to look at to where everyone could, they could at least save the two months of the parking, even though they were gracious enough to offer that up. And I do think that we need to start looking at another option as well for making sure this gets paid in the future because we were just very lucky that they happen to have the money there to be able to help out. Thank you.
Councilmember Salvia?
Thank you. So I'm in support with going till Labor Day on this. You know, I think it's wonderful that the DDA has come through with this. I think the free parking is great for the businesses, it's great for the residents. My overall concern, though, is that we're just not getting the goodwill that we should be from this because people don't know that parking's free. Everywhere you go into town, people are trying to put money in the meters. I mean, case in point, we're getting revenue from the meter. So I would propose going through Labor Day, but put a big sign across Main Street or do something that is very visible, very easy to see, low-tech, free parking through Labor Day. Come on back to downtown. So that's my thoughts on this. Thank you.
And I think Christie was, had that in her plan and was waiting to see how the vote was tonight. Is that true, Christie?
That is correct. Yes, we actually have the signs and the banners on the ready. Just, we are waiting for all the businesses to get open. And now that everybody's open, we have those in our possession. But then in our discussions, we knew that free parking was ending June 30th. So we waited before we went ahead and put those up everywhere. But we have a banner for each of the decks, as well as state signs, collection size signs, to go at the entrances for every municipal parking lot downtown.
Councilmember Albrecht?
I agree with Councilmember Salvia. You know, I read all these stories about how wonderful Royal Oak is and Birmingham and all this. And we've been doing this for months. I don't see anything on Channel 7. I don't see anything even in our own local papers. It's always Mayor Burnett did this, and Rochester Hills did this. So I'd like this all over the Rochester Post, the community newsletter, and let, you know, Dave Llewellyn know that we've been doing this all along in the COVID rebound section. I mean, I just think we need more press on this to give credit to how you guys have stepped up, Christie, with not only that, but the parklets or whatever they're called, and, you know, all the other kinds of things. We are not getting any credit for this, and I couldn't agree more with Councilmember Salvia.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christie, remember how we used to do the banner across Main Street, like for Heritage Days? Could we do the same thing?
Problem is, one of the banner poles a few years ago was, actually fell over into Main Street and was not replaced because MDOT had concerns about the wind loading and was going to make us do a high-cost engineering study to find out if we would even be able to apply for permits. The DDA at that time opted not to, so we don't have that opportunity because the pole just isn't there. And we'd have to go through that process. But I think with some of the other things, plus the social, the parking was in the Rochester Post in that long article that we had, that was there on page two. We were just offended by the protest, but we were on the next page with everything there. And it was on Channel 4. So I will certainly be happy to reach out to our friend Dave from Channel 7. But we did get some press on the parking, but it was also a part and parcel to other things that the city and the DDA have been doing.
Well, if we've come to agreement here tonight, let's rerun it with the new date in the paper.
No problem.
Mayor Protem Vavakwa?
There is no date on the signage that Christie's talking about at this point, right?
No, but just parking so they can be put up and put down easily.
So I'm still in favor of having some flexibility.
Okay.
Mayor will need a motion at some point, yeah.
Amanda has her hand up.
Amanda. Councilmember Keithley?
Thank you. I just wanted to voice my support for extending the free parking through Labor Day. I feel very uncomfortable spending any money right now, but spending it on this cause seems really important. I think it's great, it's a great driver to bring people downtown. And it's a show of goodwill on our part. We want to help support our community and our businesses, and this is a great way to do it.
Councilmember Albrecht?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the free parking through the Labor Day weekend.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Keithley. Further discussion? Support by Councilmember Keith Lee. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Vavakwa?
No.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
All right, Christie?
Bring on this time.
Signs will be starting to put out tomorrow. And, uh, as soon as I log off this call, you might see a post on social media.
All right, there we go.
Christie, can you, can you, uh, somebody suggested free parking through Labor Day. The signs don't have that, or?
They don't say Labor Day, no, but I can put it in the text of that. And that, we wanted the signs to be flexible, so we weren't sure what council was gonna decide.
Understood, but I just think that's a nice, it's a nice hook, you know, to say free parking through Labor Day. So what, I, you know, I know you're creative. You'll figure it out.
We got you.
Okay, thank you. Next receiver report from the various boards and commissions versus the planning commission, uh, Councilmember Bavakwa, Mayor Pro Tem Bavakwa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, uh, one of the things that we had to do was accept the resignation from, uh, Commissioner Patrisse Cough. Uh, so there is an opening on planning commission. Uh, first, the first item that we had before us, other than that, was, um, a facade renovation on, uh, one-one-one-seven Wilcox. And that is, uh, uh, it's an automotive, uh, old automotive repair shop, uh, kind of by the DPW. Um, and it's one of those non-conforming pieces of property that has some weird idiosyncrasies to it. Um, it, it's going to be turned into, uh, essentially like a showcase garage slash, um, home for an online, uh, classic auto sales. And, um, uh, the, uh, the applicant was, uh, is looking to put, it sounds like, uh, some money into it, really spruce it up, make it look nice. Um, and then there's issues with the fact that there's really no parking associated w- with, um, the property. But there was discussion that perhaps we will, uh, look at vacating a right-of-way, um, that will allow for two spots to be there. Um, that v- vacating of right-aways has been done for other properties along there. And this one, just for some reason, it, it never happened for them. So that was a, an interesting discussion there. Um, the next thing that we did was, um, discussed a multi-family project on, uh, two, one-two-oh-five North Main Street. This is one that's been before us multiple times. Uh, it's kind of changing, um, coming, coming at us in different iterations. This latest one, um, uh, you know, it was, it was a dis- discussion to see, to check our temperature, to see how interested we were in creating these like, uh, sort of duplexes, um, uh, to have it fit in with the, uh, with, um, the underlying zoning. Um, there's some suggestions as to how to make that happen. Um, I think there was a, there was, uh, I think, I think folks on planning commission were interested in seeing the project move forward, um, as long as some of the little issues could be addressed. So, um, so that was an interesting one. Um, and then we took a look at infill development. Um, this is an ongoing discussion. I referenced it earlier in the meeting. Um, we're looking at everything from, uh, the, the wear and tear that, um, you know, infill projects, uh, new homes, um, put on, uh, the neighborhoods, the streets, um, whether we're doing anything to a- address that, um, uh, with the, uh, with the contractors, um, taking a look at whether we're hardscaping too much of the properties to the point where we're putting undue stress on the, uh, uh, the, the stormwater system, um, whether it's leading to, um, taking down too many trees. Uh, I, I've requested that we, uh, take a look at other cities', uh, zoning information, um, or sorry, uh, uh, infill, uh, ordinance information that, um, allows for, uh, some sort of check on the, uh, on the hardscaping of properties in terms of total, uh, coverage percentage. So, um, I, I think it's, it's a, it's a good debate to have and, and, uh, and we'll continue it moving forward. There's been no, no, uh, decisions made on anything yet. We're just, we're just doing our due diligence. And, uh, I think that was about it.
Very good. Thank you. Next is a report from the City Beautiful Committee, uh, Councilmember Keith Lee.
Thank you. Uh, we had our first virtual meeting, uh, last Wednesday, which was really exciting to, to kick off. That's why I wasn't able to join the PSD slash DDA meeting. Um, unfortunately, our first act of business was to accept the resignation of Eric Bothell. He served for many years on our committee, um, and invested a lot of time. And we're just grateful for the service that he gave to the City Beautiful Commission. Uh, the Rochester Pollinators have been very busy giving away and selling plants, both online and at the farmer's market. They were actually at the farmer's market over the weekend. And all the proceeds that they do get from the sales goes back to the mayor's monarch pledge commitments. And in honor of Arbor Day, three oak trees will be planted later this summer. Usually we have a celebration that we weren't able to have this year, uh, but those are going to be planted. And we have been given a grace period, um, from the tree, the, I'm sorry, from the certification that we get for doing that has allowed us to do it later this summer. And then we also had a good neighbor nomination. So hopefully we'll be seen or giving that award at our next council meeting to recognize another good neighbor virtually. And that's all we had from the City Beautiful Commission.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Mr. City Manager, uh, Eric Bothwell has served the city for a long time. Is there some kind of, uh, um, certificate of appreciation that we can send to him?
Yeah, so for, um, anybody who served more than ten years, uh, we have, uh, uh, a, it's either a plaque or a certificate. So I'll make sure, I'll double-check that with the clerk and we'll make sure to get the correct, uh, one. If you'd like it presented at a upcoming, uh, meeting, I'm also happy to coordinate that.
I think that would be really nice. He's given a lot to this community.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's also check on, uh, Eric's wife, Gail. She may have served as many years as he has. So I would not wanna present him with.
Yeah, yeah.
And not her.
Yeah. Yeah, they both served the historical and, uh, City Beautiful for a long, long time.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, next is the, the DDA PSD joint meeting, uh, Councilmember Peterson?
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, so far we've had seven meetings since May thirteenth. And, uh, they've been very busy. All the meetings have been focused around getting the businesses back up and running. And, uh, the last meeting, they actually, uh, approved the outdoor dining program, um, to get, to have that begun. And we have approximately, uh, fourteen restaurants who will be participating in that. And there was also the, um, there was this, uh, mini-grant program that was also started that Christie, uh, discussed. And that was to help those that are not part of the dining program to still be able to have assistance and, uh, being able to accommodate their businesses. Um, Ben actually gave us an update regarding the social districts legislation, because he actually spoke at, um, the state, um, regarding that. And those would be, um, I believe, moving forward as well. And then there was a discussion regarding having some of the outdoor, other outdoor spaces, uh, utilized, uh, during this time for the different businesses downtown. And as, uh, one of them was discussed this evening, um, going and having an event, um, at the parking deck. Those were the different discussions that we've had. And, um, it's, but they've done a great job, all the managing the, um, downtown in their new location and having all the Oakland County PPE delivered to them and dispersing that out to all the business owners. Uh, they've done an incredible job with that. Also, they've, um, have their line of, uh, love, uh, local Rochester, uh, products in the store. You can purchase online or in the store. So all moving along well and as well as the big table that was, uh, put into the business. So they have a nice gathering space to meet, um, business owners when they come in and, uh, to be able to stay safe, et cetera. So they're doing a great job.
So that table, was that, is that all reclaimed material?
I, I believe so. Christie could actually, um, probably.
I think it's all from Rochester.
Yeah.
From the homes.
Yep. Oh, yes, correct. Yep. So.
Okay, thank you. Next is the Pink Creek Trailway Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, sir. Uh, positive updates. So the, uh, mulberry pollinator garden, uh, was finally installed after five years of planning. Um, so hopefully you'll get a chance to be out on the trail and see that. Um, we also began our twenty-twenty-one budget discussions. And primarily, the first item on the agenda was to make sure that the municipalities would still be able to meet their, their monthly or annual commitments. And, uh, we're, we're safe to say that all the participating municipalities will be able to contribute to the future budget next year. And finally, the log jam at the bridge near, uh, Dinosaur Hill, uh, has been cleared, uh, to the thanks of the local, uh, trout, uh, unlimited chapter, the Vanguard, uh, chapter, uh, and very excited for that.
Very good. Councilmember Albrecht?
Dave, you mentioned also the, the butterfly garden when we talked earlier today. I walked by that and it looked beautiful. So I don't wanna steal your thunder.
No, thank you. Great.
Yeah, it looks very nice. Um, okay, thank you. Next, uh, to new business referral miscellaneous, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Um, so for the first, we just had the, uh, the items for our, um, check register. And if there's no questions on that, um, we'll jump into my, uh, other, uh, just updates. Um, we did start rolling out the, uh, senior concierge service, which, uh, will go through August thirty-first. Um, our finance department, uh, along with, uh, um, coordination with the, the court's office administration, uh, will be, um, able to, uh, process for seniors, actually go out to their house, uh, and assist them, um, with the payment of bills. So if it's the water bill payment, paying their taxes, with those sort of things. Um, more information's on our city website at, uh, RochesterMI.org slash concierge. Um, or you can just call the city's number and be happy to, to help any of the seniors through that. Uh, in addition to the concierge service, we're still taking appointments, um, to meet with residents, vendors, uh, and, uh, uh, any of the contractors. So, uh, there's a phone number right up, uh, uh, on the, the main door. Or just go to our website. And again, uh, we're happy to schedule the appointment with the, the appropriate staff member. Um, I'll let Nick talk about the Clinton River, uh, advisory. But, um, there's basically been a, uh, a diversion in the river that has, uh, caused a, uh, really the river to flow and move in a bypass. So, Nick, if you wanna?
Sure. Um, I was on a call today with, uh, say, the Clinton River Watershed Director or Field People, three people from Eagle and, um, the actual, the Lamperside Division of Eagle, um, who, who are very concerned about this creek. So if you can picture that, obviously the water flows down the river, goes over the Yakes Dam. If you go there now, for the first time since eighteen sixty-five, there is no water going over the dam. So la- last spring, a year ago spring, the river punched a hole through the bank across from the Letica property and kinda slowly was making a channel. Well, this spring, it blew wide open. And it has actually re-channeled the river through the private property between the dam and Letica. And it comes out below Yakes Dam. And when that happened, it took a lot of gravel and made a huge gravel bar just north of the breach, which dried out the dam. And then a lot of sediment came down to the dam. And Mike, the owner of the dam, he has to replace some boards. He's gonna have to literally dig out tons of sand and mud so that that can be restored. The cost is probably north of four hundred thousand. Um, the state jumped in on emergency bonds and gave us two fifty and said, no permits, just do whatever you have to do. So we're gonna try to sheet pile the bank and push the river back towards the dam. But we can't do that until we clear out the river and g- and get the, clear out the gravel and then clear off the mud over the dam. So and then we'll media after Wednesday at one, we're gonna try to come to solution. I still need more money. Uh, but we're gonna do the best we can. So it's not good. Um, it's become dangerous as paddlers think it's funny to go through the channel. That channel cuts through the woods. And it's got a lot of underpinning roots and stuff, so it's very dangerous. Yeah, a lot of any trees. I've had to make some rescues already. So we're trying to do everything. We can't, we have signs going up all over. Don't go this way. Stop, get out. So it's, it's a bit of an environmental disaster, but we're gonna figure it out.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can include some pictures, but it's also up on our website, the alert and the notice, and we pushed it out through our social media. But, uh, yeah, it's a, it's a very, uh, challenging, uh, issue right now. I mean, that, that's the last one I wanted to just update council on.
Very good. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bavakwa?
I was just, I was just wondering if there were any theories as to, you know, after all these years, why this happened now?
Yeah, actually, believe it or not, muskrats, beavers, cut one little hole in that bank deep enough that with the right angle, the water can hit that. And then a tree fell down and pulled the roots out. That the water was hitting the base of the roots, pushed the tree just enough to create a channel and then it goes. And some rivers, if you look at the overall, uh, river pattern over the years, that river's changed a lot, but this was not expected.
I think, I think that's under the definition of stuff happens.
Twenty, twenty, twenty.
Yeah. Don't go back to twenty twenty.
Uh, anything else, Mr. Manager?
Nope, that, that's it for, uh, for my update.
Uh, Councilman Peterson, you had a comment?
Yes, I did. Um, actually, uh, city, uh, minute manager, could you actually add that, uh, senior concierge to the front page of the website as well for the seniors?
Sure, be happy to.
So they actually know about it?
Yep. Yeah, and, and we included it last Friday in our update. We'll include it this Friday in our update as well.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, uh, city clerk, any comments tonight?
Yep, lots of, uh, election updates. Uh, we received our ballots last Thursday. Um, machines have been programmed and tested, so they're operational. Um, to give you some context for my next comment, um, in twenty-twelve and twenty-sixteen, the August primary elections, each of those had about seven hundred and fifty total absentee ballots. Through today, I've issued eleven hundred that will be going out in the mail on Thursday. I still have over a thousand applications out that I've sent. And I confirmed with the Secretary of State's office today that the eight thousand that they're going to send will hit bailboxes by the end of this week. So buckle up.
Mayor Pro Tem Bavakwa?
Yeah, just curious, do, do you happen to have the, the, the total vote numbers for, uh, for those primaries?
Some, uh, the, each of them were around fourteen hundred total.
Fourteen hundred, and we already have eleven hundred absentees.
Absentees, correct.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. Um, LeAnn, uh, people have asked, uh, uh, people are concerned and they asked me to ask this evening because some, uh, residents have already received, um, some of these ballots. Um, but in a household, certain people have, other people haven't. I know they haven't come from you. And these are Rochester residents who have received ballots. So who else is sending these ballots out to our residents?
So they probably received applications, not ballots. Um,
Okay.
Voters and callers tend to use those entertainably. So if anyone has a question or concern, they should call me. I can look up their record, tell them exactly what it is they have in front of them. But no ballots have been mailed out from my office yet. Um, but I, I find that when they're talking about the applications, they're referring to them as ballots and they're not.
Okay. They said that they were coming from Oakland County. What's the address on ours?
Uh, ours, ours would be.
Our address?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So they're from Oakland County. So I guess I will have them reach out to you.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess a, a bigger, broader answer is that anyone can send, um, applications out. Democratic Party has in the past, Republican Party has in the past. Wasn't aware that Oakland County has sent anything, especially with them knowing that the state is sending out, um, applications to everyone. So I don't know, um, that anyone would have taken the time to do that. So have people call me directly and I can look at their record and know exactly what they're talking about.
All right. And I guess, um, if the city manager can actually put a blurb about that on there. All right, and I guess um if the city manager can actually put a blurb about that on the mains, on the main webpage too, just in case.
Yeah, we have, we have an elections webpage, so yes, we can, I'll work with Jane tomorrow. We can put some notice out letting people know this is gonna start hitting their their mailboxes this week, both ballots and um a majority of the applications are gonna be from the, from the state.
Okay, cause I've had, I mean, throughout the county, I have had many people calling. Uh we've discussed this at different meetings that I've been in that they've um you know, two people, I mean, two residents prior to them own uh move, you know, living in the property have received ballots at these addresses. Um people who have died have received addresses, I mean.
You're, you're, you're always gonna have a lag in the um voter registration system for people that, for example, have moved out of state and maybe re-registered to vote or surrendered their license in another state. There isn't great communication between states. So if you have people that move out of state, the other with the deaths, you have the same situation. People may have died out of state or not in Oakland County or not in Michigan and we're not gonna know that. And it, there's no way to know that. So there, the voter registration system is is very fluid. On a daily basis, it's changing for that reason. So um that, those are a couple of explanations for why that could be happening. Then when, also, as you, as all of you know, from sending out mailers, when you're running for election and you send out several hundred, um there's always a percentage that is gonna get returned and deliverable or being correct, just because everyone's moving every single day.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Protem Bavakwa.
Yeah, and just to take that one step further, um uh city clerk, um even if somebody receives uh an application for someone who's passed away or moved to another state, if they were to try to fill that out and send it in, they wouldn't be able to get a ballot from, by doing.
That, that is correct. Um there's a signature check that that's the first step before anything else is done, so. And again, that signature is the signature that you um signed at the Secretary of State's office in person, so. Um it's not like anyone could have signed it for you, um and that's what we're going from, so. In fact, I I caught that exact situation today. Um someone who had an apartment number that was fourteen hundred signed the application for someone in the same building whose uh apartment number was one forty. So obviously, the signatures didn't match, the names didn't match, but the main address matched for the most part, so I'll have to get with them and get that fixed. So now the signature verification component is there at the front end and when the ballots returned again.
Thank you for the clarification.
Good. Anything else, Madam Clerk?
Uh no, that's enough.
All right, that sounds good. Uh Attorney, uh Crock?
Uh nothing, thank you for tonight.
Okay, anything from the Chiefs or Nick?
I was just throwing one, three quick little good newses. Uh people love the new tennis courts. They're constantly used, so kudos to that project. I've never seen so many people fishing in the pond all day long and catching big fish. And late, our company that takes care of the pond, they've been not so good in other years. They they are nailed the dish that pond is perfect. We're catching big fish, baby fish, so the pond's healthy. And lastly, I'd like to thank the chief and his staff, whoever worked so Saturday at the graduation. My nephew graduated, we were up north, he called to say what a great experience it was that he got to do the, his graduation from Stony Creek drive-through and I I talked to chief today, I don't know how they pulled that off, but his family was ecstatic and said to say thank you to everybody involved, so I thank, that's it.
Yeah, I think, I think Officer Amy, our school liaison, was part of that, so congratulations to her. It was, it was hot out there too, I think. Okay, uh Councilmember Salvia?
Yes, so uh the community house has a tent out back for anyone, any resident, anyone in the community to rent. So if you want to have an outdoor party under the tent, you can rent it. Uh they set it up for fifty people, social distance tables uh for people at a table. So I think it'll be a great uh place for summer gatherings uh for people. That's it.
Very good. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um so on the consent agenda tonight, we had uh, we spoke about an event at the band shell. And I was wondering, as as companies are reopening and and certain businesses and they're looking for different ways to get their team members together, and one of those might be an outdoor meeting. With the band shell having electric uh capability, would we offer that as a meeting space for anybody interested? I mean, we could provide tables and chairs and with the electric, they could all be hooked into their computers, et cetera. Um I I don't know, just, just the thought. I don't, I don't know if the city's considered anything like that, utilizing that space in that type of fashion.
Uh Mr. City Manager, maybe take a look at that?
Yeah, we can look at it. Uh the Quatus uh is probably uh a little bit better set up for, I guess, the meeting space with electrical and it's been checked out. The band shell has typically been uh associated with special events.
Okay.
Um but uh ha- happy to look into both of those and report back.
Great, thanks.
Uh Councilmember Keith Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to note that this Thursday is the annual biking history tour for the Rochester Hills Public Library in partnership with the Van Housen Farm. And this year, we're focusing on, or they're focusing, I'm not there anymore, uh but they're focused on uh Rochester women in history.
All right.
Thursday.
Uh Councilmember Albrecht.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson?
Uh just one thing, most of the other things have been addressed. Um a lot of residents are wanting to know when we are going to actually open the city offices. I mean, I know personally in my job, I've gone to other um municipalities around us and were able to get in. Um and you don't need an appointment or anything. Um some people found it very uh difficult to come to the city and have to wait to be let in. And I think that doesn't help us with the weather, um being able to be, you know, never know what it's going to be and having people standing outside uh to do that and wondered if there's a way that we can uh at least let them inside the building and then be addressed at that point in time.
We definitely can look at it. Right now, um we're set to open to the public with all of our construction being completed um at the early part of July, but will be open to the public as of July sixth, right after the Fourth of July holiday.
But they can do it by an appointment right now?
Correct, yep. So uh so residents can call, email. Um we're able to set up uh uh appointments, meet with them in uh specific rooms. Um meet at, meet them at the front door, side door, um pick up uh information at the Dropbox, uh you know. And uh to this point, I've not heard a a complaint, so i- if there are from any pass along through council members, uh please let me know.
Well, that's why I brought it up. They, they have, uh they're upset about it and I, uh other municipalities have the cities open, so. Thank you.
Uh Mayor Protem Bavakwa?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, uh uh Jane, Jeremy, Marcy, you guys waited around? You guys wanna say anything?
Uh nothing for me, thank you guys.
All right. You don't have to. Jane?
All set, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, um I just have a a couple of quick things. Um yes, the tennis courts are busy and they're look great and they are great, so thank you for that, for the the city to to provide that and really, I've been down a little bit. The park's been very busy. Um and I think people have done a pretty good job of social distancing, but we need to always continue to to talk about that. Um I think, you know, walking downtown, a a lot of the businesses are open and it's, it's really good to see them. Um in our DDA meeting, a couple of, a couple of restaurants, La Pumas and the Meeting House talked about, you know, their first weekend, they had very good weekends. Um so that's encouraging, you know, it seems like people want to be downtown. Um and also, uh Madam Clerk, I do have a nomination for Planning Commission. So um I'm gonna make that tonight. Um and actually, it's um Christian Hauser, who was just appointed to the DDA, and he reached out to me that his, his passion and his experience, he would like to be on the Planning Commission. Um so I've, I've agreed to appoint him to that. Um so I, I, is it, is it, can we vote on him tonight to be on the Planning Commission or does it have to go to the next?
It doesn't have to, Your Honor. There's, there's no steadfast guidelines. If you want to ask uh council to.
Okay, so if council wants to do that.
I would make that motion. He'd, he'd be an awesome asset. He's very good at that.
Okay, so motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Forward.
Support by Councilmember Sage um to immediately appoint uh Christian Hauser to be going off the DDA onto the Planning Commission. Uh Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you, and so now we will have an opening um for a citizen member of the uh DDA. So if anybody, you know of anybody or anybody can apply and we can put that on the website as well. Okay, so now we're going to uh have a a motion to go into closed session to discuss trap strategy and negotiation session on a collective bargaining agreement and also close session to consider periodic personal evaluations of the police and the fire chief. And then uh Mr. City Manager, do, are we going to come out of the?
We, we, we will be coming out uh to publicly uh take action, so.
We will be w- with the consideration of coming back into open session.
Correct.
So we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Okay, we, Councilmember Peterson and support by?
Ford.
Uh Councilmember Albrecht, uh Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and then everybody needs to log off and then to log back on to the closed session uh Zoom meeting. So hopefully, we'll see everybody in a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um do we have a motion?
You got it, Anne.
We are live. Okay, so.
Hi, Mr. Bixson.
How are you?
I'm okay.
That's one of Waterford Mott's most famous alumnus right there. And there's a lot of them, I might add. Mary, Mary Barra is the most famous, probably. With the Waterford Mott and then to GMI or Kettering or whatever, whatever it is. Um we'll give, we'll give Councilmember Peterson another minute or so.
Leanne, while we're here, did you get when we went into closed session and then you you have the time for when we are now in, back and open?
I got it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and uh move forward. So do we have a motion for the first about the um negotiation session and collective bargaining agreement?
Do we need to go into roll call to be in open session or?
No, I got it.
So do we have a motion?
Motion to with uh with regards to the uh fire uh union negotiation to proceed as uh discussed with the, with the city manager.
Motion by Councilmember Sage.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Salvia. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson is still absent. Sage?
Yes.
And Salvia?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a uh motion for the periodic personal evaluation of the police and the fire chief.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the city manager for the periodic uh valuation as discussed in closed session for both the chiefs, uh Shettenhelm and Cislik.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht?
Forward.
Report by Councilmember Sage, discussion. Again, just thank you to the two chiefs for for their work and service during this extremely difficult time. Uh we really appreciate it. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bavakwa?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
And I see Peterson is still absent and Sage?
Yes.
And Salvia?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Uh have a good night. Meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Night, guys.